Recording in progress. Okay, we would like to welcome you tonight to the City Council Work Meeting. It is June 24th. We're happy to have all of you here. I'm Sherri Pym and I'm calling this meeting to order. The first thing we need to do is, when we passed the budget last time, there was some rate increases. And in order for it to do those then, we just have to have this resolution. It was in your packet. So we just need to have, we've already passed them. It's not a matter of us repassing them. It's just a matter of us having a motion for this resolution. Have to have this resolution. It was in our packet. So we just need to have, we've already passed them.
In case you missed it the first time?
A little rerun.
They have to hear their own voices, do they? Anyway, we just need to have someone make a motion and this will be a roll call vote to pass the resolution. We will be sending out, you know, last time we sent out a letter to all of the residents letting them know. We're seeing if we can do just a postpart. We sent that to see if it might be a little less expensive for us to mail that out to everyone. So hopefully we'll maybe have that tomorrow. We can get that sent out. So I'm informing everyone. So is there someone that would be willing to make a motion on this resolution? And it was like I said, it was in your packet.
I don't think we can do that in a work meeting.
Well, it's actually a, this is a City Council meeting, but it is a work meeting of the City Council. So it's the same. So, yeah. When we thought we'd sit down here because we're, but it is a regular City Council meeting. Am I correct, Reed?
Yeah, that's what was planned.
Yeah.
I thought we'd be up there.
Yeah. Well, we can move up there. If you would sooner move up there.
I thought you said it was a work meeting.
Yeah. No, it's our City Council meeting, but it is a working City Council meeting. That's why we thought we would sit down here, but we can move up there if you would sooner. I just thought, sometimes when we're discussing, sometimes it's so easy to be here than up there, turning our microphones on and off.
So I'll make that motion.
Okay. So the motion to approve Resolution 2025-04 was made by Councilmember Hill. Is there a second?
I'll say yes.
Second was made by Councilmember Fowers. Any discussion on the motion? Okay, we need to do this by roll call vote then. I will start with Councilmember Hill.
Aye.
Councilmember Wilcox?
Aye.
Councilmember Mollie?
Aye.
Councilmember Fowers?
Aye.
Okay, motion carries. Okay. So the next thing on our agenda then is a discussion. And we've had a few discussions so far. We really wanted to have a discussion when Reed was able to be here. There are some, at least some tentative decisions. And the reason why we put these down below is if we talked about things tonight and we feel like we're ready, that's why we put a possible motion. If we're not, then we don't have to. But if we were, then we would need to have them listed as an agenda item so that we could go ahead and motion if we were. And so there are some themes. So I know we talked quite a few already about Smiths, but this will be our chance as a City Council to discuss and Reed can give us some input also and so.
Yeah, if you're, if you're going to go ahead, it'd be nice to have some definitive motion to that effect because it will require some changes to the general plan, to the map, and to the zoning map. And we can start, and absolutely, just in the general code. And I can put all those together, working with Malcolm, but it's a fair amount of work. And I just do not do it unless you're going to move ahead with it. I guess that's the bottom line. Maybe that's selfish on my part. I don't know.
Well, and you know, we talked about the development agreement too, which we've talked about that quite a bit, that anything we do would be contingent upon the development agreement if, if they, then that would at least give us some time to work on that. You know, if ever they come back, you know, they've mentioned about possibly looking into some financing tools, but if it came back and it wasn't agreeable, if it's not in the development agreement, then we've, this doesn't lock us into anything other than giving them some approval, tentative approval, go ahead and get started on some things so we can start working.
Yeah, I think you do it in a way that if, if they can't do the things that you want, and I presume financing is certainly the big one, then all of it reverts back to what it is before you started. So you don't end up with a piece of property that's been rezoned, but this development doesn't go in.
Is it good to spend all of the money that we would have to spend to do this though, without some knowledge if they have the financial tools? I mean, like to go through writing up all of the stuff that you'd have to? It is?
I'd probably get an idea from them before I do a whole lot.
Yeah.
I would guess it's not going to take them too long to find, get an idea as to what they're going to do.
Yeah, because we, we kind of gave them an idea of what we were expecting.
Is the funding the, the big issue on, on the tank or on the pump station? Is that?
I think that was.
One of the big.
One of the, one of the things, yeah. Lift station. And maybe how the residents, the zoning behind for those individual residences would be put together. I think that was another thing we had a recommendation on how we'd like to see it. But I guess my concern is, we give, we've given those recommendations. Are we on track with those? Or, I mean, they, they come back? Are they, are they saying, okay, we'll, we'll go ahead and comply with what you'd like? Or are we still going down the same, we're just doing the same thing over and over? And they just keep coming back with the same, same thing?
I think the CRA was explained pretty well last time because we all thought the utility tax and the sales tax was included in it. But my question was, can you move forward with the CRA and leave Hooper City out of it? You know, because it's each individual entity that buys in or buys out of it. You know, it's not an all for one or one for all. It's each individual taxing entity has to agree to it. And so we don't have to agree to it as Hooper City. You know, we don't have to say, no, you, you know, you can't have our property tax or whatever it is. But they were going to, you know, the two big hitters are the school and the county, well, three big hitters, and the fire department. So it was still unclear to me whether they were going to ask for 50%, 70%. You know, they seemed to think that 50% was enough to cover it, but we never really did get an affirmative either way. So back to what we requested was that Hooper City didn't want to participate in the CRA. And so whether that was agreeable or not, I have no idea, you know.
So you didn't want to participate even with property tax? That would be a minimum contribution.
Right.
And it would also, it would not be any existing property tax. It would only be new property tax.
Well, I mean, the whole thing starting with the planning commission is we didn't want Hooper City to fund any of the infrastructure improvements. You know, whether it's $10 or a million dollars, that was either not funding it or it was funding it. You know, and our request was that we didn't participate in that.
And I don't know that it makes a lot of difference dollar wise. I would think it's an easier sell for them to the other districts if they can say Hooper's putting in the same amount of.
Right.
Percentage of property tax as you are.
Right.
But, but that's a sales issue. It's not a, I don't think monetarily you're talking much money.
Yeah, monetarily it's not that much. It's property tax. We don't charge hardly anything at all.
Right.
Well, but it would just be the increase on the property tax anyway, so it would be on what that property was worth, Greenbelt, and it could be a little bit, but does that look like Hooper is very realistically?
It wouldn't be the Greenbelt.
No, it wouldn't. That's what I'm saying. It's not the Greenbelt. It would just be the increment. But does that look like we're a very, how does that look if we're a city that wants this and we say, but we're not even willing to participate in it at all?
Yeah, as a sales, as a sales tool, I would think that's a problem for.
I mean, it would sound better to those other entities if we're participating. But if you look at what they're doing and providing for that tax base, the school district isn't going to get any impact for several years. Once the development's done and people live there, then they will. The fire district has a little bit. They're going to have to respond to any accidents, but they're not going to have a huge burden. The city is going to have a burden when they start building this. So if you look at what those tax dollars are supposed to support, it makes more sense than, just sounds like we're greedy if we're asking for a belief and want to participate. But when you stop and look at what those tax dollars are funding, I think it makes sense to have some of those defer. They're not getting rid of their tax. They're just deferring for a time and to get it collected. So, and I don't think they have a lot on the line. The mosquito abatement isn't going to have more mosquitoes.
No, those types don't have anything at all. The school district would have an impact as soon as there are kids.
Soon as there's kids, yeah.
One, one thing too is, you know, this isn't just asking about can we build a commercial development. This is asking, can we build a commercial development and build an entire community along with it? You know, they didn't just come to us saying, you know, you have a commercially zoned area. We would like to put a business in it. They've come to us with an entire package about rezoning and doing everything else. If they came to us the other way, it wouldn't be requiring all of this rezoning and stuff that they're asking for. You know, that's another thing that I thought of. And according to that impact study, can we really afford it for the first few years? It's costly those first few years for us.
And I'm, I'm on board with that. It's, it's like, it's, it seems like it's super messy for us with the CRA. So there's other developments or other properties that need pump, you know, lift stations to be developed in Hooper. So do we want to set a precedent? So we might enter into this CRA, but guess what? We might have to do a couple more to be fair with everybody. So I'm, you know, it just seems like, like I've said, I'm not against the commercial development. If you're going to develop it and make money off the citizens of Hooper and change it forever, then you guys pay for it. That's my position. I think they ought to fund it. Because I think we beat this horse to death. So we need to make a decision. Either we, we go, go with the, you know, more recommendations or we move on. Because, and I firmly believe there's something else, you know, I don't think it's just the Smiths and, and the housing. There's, there's bigger plans. I really believe that. And this is just the start of it. So we got to make sure we're doing the right thing, the right direction for our community. Because there's no looking back once, once this goes in. And you look at other cities, like surrounding cities have done this. Their, their property taxes have not gone down. They've actually gone up with commercial development. They have gone up and that's absolutely true. Do we need tax based revenue? Yes, we do. But is this the answer? I don't know. I, I think this is the first person that has approached us with this kind of a development. I think there could be better, better options. What they might look like, I don't know. But anyway, I, I'm 100% against CRA that was participating in this all. That's, that's my opinion. I, I think we're painting ourselves in a corner and setting us up to do multiple ones that are going to cost us, you know, for the first three years, we're not going to make anything. We're going to go in the hole, five, 600 grand. Where's that going to come from? Let me tell you what's going to come from. We're going to have to raise property taxes to fund it. That's what's going to happen. And it's going to happen regardless, but it's going to be, it's going to come a lot faster than we think.
So a couple of thoughts with that. CRAs can only be used for commercial. So unless if we have another commercial development that wants to come to Hooper that wants a CRA, then like, for instance, if we have another development that's just only houses, that, that really doesn't apply.
There's, there's other commercial, you know, future land uses, commercial, that needs a pump station. So buy the Sinclair.
Yeah, well, part of that is.
Well, part of, well, so is this one too. You know, it, it's an interesting discussion. I'm not sure that the way it's been done in the past is a great system. The pioneering agreements have been challenging in my mind and maybe not entirely fair. The, the thing about a CRA is those that are benefiting from the project, the project itself, if it's commercial, and in this case, the people that are building houses are paying for the cost of what's going on. Because that's where the, if there is a tax revenue, that's where it comes from. And that would be true, I suppose, if you use that device to fund another pump station as well. Is that, is that a fairer way than the city just putting it in? And then it would be totally tax dollars or trying to do a pioneering agreement, which is fine if all those developments they anticipate in the pioneering agreement happen and happen quickly. If they don't, that developer is out a whole lot of money for a long time. And that's not entirely fair either. So it's, it's all a matter of how you look at it.
Thing is, too, is at least, like you just explained, I agree with, but at least the developer makes the decision. I mean, they don't have to go into a pioneering agreement. They don't have, the city's not twisting their arm to do that. It's just say, if you want to develop it, then here's, these are the, this is what you have to abide by with the agreement. And then they decide whether they want to do it or whether they don't want to do it. I guess for, for the most part, it must have worked because they've kept on doing it with the development. So.
So, so we're in unfamiliar territory here because we've never done this. This is really our first commercial development that's even asked to come to Hooper. So, so we, we don't know. We're really unfamiliar. The way I looked at it though, is I don't see what we have to lose because they said, so, so they, if we will, so, so far what we would have to say is to them is we will give you a consent to, that if you can go and find this, depending on the development agreement, and we have to all agree on that, then we would agree or we won't agree. But they're the ones doing all the work. So they go and see if they can do the CRA. If it comes back, it's not anything that we agree with, then, then what are we out? They're not asking us to put any money upfront to do this. They're the ones that will go find out. So they will be the ones that will go to all the taxing and ask. And if, and if it doesn't work, then it doesn't work. That I, and because none of us know, like Reed's, I'm, know the most familiar with any of the rest of us. We, we don't know, that I don't know why we wouldn't give it a try. Because yes, maybe there's someone else that'll come along. Like I mentioned last time, you've all been here a lot longer than I have, but has there been anybody else that has? If they have, did you turn them down or where are they?
I want to make sure I'm understanding what you're explaining. So if that's the case, why haven't they done that? Why haven't they been going around to the?
Because they, they can't. They, they don't, they're not authorized to go to Weber County and say, we're here acting for Hooper City, when Hooper City hasn't even given them the approval to act for us.
Okay, so, so they are asking for an approval of some kind?
Depending upon if the financing, if that can, in the development agreement. And if it doesn't work out, then, then they walk or we walk, either one.
So the way I understand it is we have to change the land use map. We have to open the general plan and we have to rezone it before they can even go ask for money. So it's, it's stamped approved, more or less.
Well, you can do it conditionally so that if they don't get it, it's reversed. But yes.
You can.
Yes, that's what we would do. We would do it conditionally. And we, because there's no safe way to do it, but conditionally. It would have to be conditionally, based on what they could get and on the development agreement. Because no, we're not giving anybody a blanket rezone because one, if it falls through, then we've already recommitted to rezone a piece of ground. And when it comes to the general plan, from my interpretation of it, from what our general plan said, you already designated commercial and you did designate that there was going to be some higher density in association with the commercial. But the land use map doesn't really reflect that, the future land use. So you had commercial and the narrative of the general plan says about the possibility of having some higher density, but there isn't higher density. But yes, we do have to. So what you're saying, Ryan, is 100% correct. But it would be conditional, just like Ryan, just like Reed said, we could put any conditions, we won on it. But they at least have to have a go ahead from Hooper saying, go ahead and lease, because we, because we don't know. We haven't even given them a conditional approval to even go look yet and see what they could do.
And just from experience, I would say 90% sure that they're going to get approval from the taxing entities. If one of them asks. Most of them don't say no.
So I go back to my question. How do we afford it?
How, how do we afford?
Those three years. How do we, how do we afford those first three years?
But so those first three years of, and maybe I'm misunderstanding the LRB, but those first three years was before the store was complete.
Right. So how do they afford that?
Correct? And so in the meantime, those first three years are going to be their construction costs? What costs will we have? Like?
The, 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 I can't think of this. The study shows that the city of Hooper will be, will be down. How much was it, Bryce?
I don't know. It's, I mean, because there's two different areas. One was, you know, probably a half a million and the one was, the other seemed like it was 300,000, something like that. Because there's two different areas and I tried to get him to explain it to me, but I don't, maybe he didn't understand my question. But definitely there was a period of time that it was going to cost us money.
But I, I, yes, because I saw those numbers too, but I, but from my interpretation, that was before they started getting the tax base. Because if Smiths comes in and builds this, what will that cost the city? Like, they will pay for this. So, so, so let's just start from ground run. So they, if they get all the taxing, like you're thinking, Ryan, they probably would. And they get the money and they put in the lift station, which is what, one thing. And that maybe won't go in before they start construction. Maybe it will. I don't know. But what costs will Hooper necessarily have prior to them? I, I don't know what costs we would have.
Would have to ask those guys.
Because if they, if they put in houses.
They've earmarked some things, so.
Oh, I'm not sure I understand that either.
Yeah, yeah. Because if you do a development like Rosens, how much did Rosens cost Hooper City? Didn't they pay for their own infrastructure?
So see, this is even bringing up questions right now to me. So what are they going to develop first? So the first time we met, and again, I'm just going by what was explained to us. Like Stuart made it clear that he's not a residential developer. You know, his intent is, is that he'll put in the commercial and then he'll sell the property to a residential developer. So where, where does that play into this? It's like if we, if they go in and build the Smiths first and that's, you know, that's what we, that's what was recommended to us by the planning commission. I think that's good. I wonder if it doesn't. Can, if we rezone this, can he go ahead and resell the back portion to a residential developer? And then we're dealing with a zoning issue there with someone that wouldn't be.
I wonder if he can't address all that though in a development agreement.
Yes.
You won't, you won't authorize the building of the homes until either all or some portion of the commercial is finished.
At least a certain percent of it or something.
Yeah, maybe all of it, maybe some percent. I would guess once they've invested a ton of money, they're not going to stop.
He, he agreed last time to kind of phase it, you know, that maybe it wouldn't be all or none. It'd be phased so that only so much residential came and we had to meet certain thresholds with the commercial development as.
Yeah, that probably makes sense. That'd be put out in the development agreement. I, I, I guess you could ask the financial people what those costs were, but I'm not, I'm not seeing what the costs are going to be to the city.
Were they hard costs or were they just?
Either were going to their costs.
Costs in theory of like wear and tear and?
Could be rent and tear on the roads, that kind of things.
Something like that.
Well, it's that CRA. I don't know if there's a payment to the CRA.
Well, no, it's just showing the net fiscal benefit. So it's just showing.
These are the expenditures, the first in the estimate or the studies are the expenditures throughout the years. So the city's year one expenditure rate is 11 grand, 36 grand, 61 grand in year three.
Well, we'll look at the breakout of what that is.
Public safety, public works.
So is the sheriff said he's going to increase your fee because you have a development?
Well, like, it, it depends on what script you have.
Yeah.
What do you think about net fiscal benefit? So.
That's, that's what I asked here.
That's all entities though, or a county, state. Yeah, the city, yeah, but our costs are here.
Which we might not necessarily.
Yeah, I don't know his, I don't know his method of drawing these costs right here. I don't know how he calculated these.
Did he show a revenue that offsets that or?
Not for, not for year one, two, or three because we've found the revenue produced yet.
Well, for example, parks and recreation, how is that going to change because they do develop? I don't know. Could you tell us?
Until there's some kind of park built in there that they turn over to us, but I wouldn't think that'd be in year one or two.
I guess you could ask the sheriff.
They have a one year warranty and it's going to take one year to build it at least, so.
The sheriff's determination of what you pay is based on 40% population and 60% cost per service. That's not going to change at all while they're constructing.
There may be some public works if you were involved, but I don't know even, you would know better than I would, Jared. What would even be involved with that?
Not in inspections tied in. I mean, typically we charge them an inspection fee, so they're paying those anyway. I don't see a ton of public works involvement right off the bat, though.
So write that into the development agreement that there won't be any additional costs to the city. Those are minimum costs anyway, it looks to me like. But, and I don't see that they're realistic either.
I kind of understand the study differently, but I would want to read it before I. I think that those are showing net, net state, like, like, like steady state, current state. I think that they took this study, took a CRA area and then ran the calculations and those are steady state, so something bill, I think those are our real costs currently for that area in hypothetical nature. Does that make sense? It's like whether we do this or not, I think we have a certain cost in the study of that CRA that was defined that area. And I think those are the costs of that area, but that's just my opinion.
Just kind of a base, kind of a base level cost that's there whether you do it or not. And it goes up, you can see proportionally as the development's done. But I think initially that should cost just whether you do this or not. I think you have a cost just in that area of the city. I would have to dive into it to confirm that, but that's my feeling with the study, how it's done.
And Bryce, you thought that, that you might have others come in and offer options. That's possible. But I'll, I'll guarantee you, these folks are going to build their facility somewhere. If it's not here, it'll be in Roy next door or in West Haven next door. And so that another big grocer wanting to come in and build is not likely, I don't think.
Does anybody ever have a discussion about what's going to happen to our neighbors, like Winingers, Kent's? Those stores are already struggling. I hate to be the big bad guy and put people out of business just because we're building a store, but I think Winingers is on the verge of going under. I think this would put them under for sure, but I don't know. We can't.
But I don't, yes, I thought that too. I remember because Winingers was there, we all went to Winingers and then they built the Kent's. We thought, well, how will they ever survive? But they have. Then they built Winco and they still have survived. The thing is.
Scrap them by.
But we have a city that we're, that we're trying to maintain. I mean, we have a city that if we do not have some kind of commercial base or a significant tax increase, we are not going to be able to keep sustaining our city. And I've thought about that, you know? People say, well, yeah, there's going to be so much more traffic on the road. I go on 5500 and maybe I stop at Kent's, maybe I go to Harman's, maybe I go to Winco. Our city gets zero money anytime I go to any of those other stores. And I've heard it say, well, but how do we know that Smiths will stay in business? Because Smiths do stay in business.
Well, that being said, did you see the article?
Kroger.
Parrot Company Kroger shutting down 60 stores nationwide in New York.
But that is Smiths. Kroger is.
That is Smiths.
There'll be some in Utah.
Yeah, I didn't, I didn't see in Utah. I was told about the story, I mean, about the story last night.
50% of their stores will be shutting down.
I'm sure things change and they move and they, they figure all that out before they even ask, I think.
Yeah. They've done a lot of research on this location far before. I don't know when the first time they came and talked to you, Dell. It's probably been a year, two years ago maybe now, since they first came and they had done.
It was that fall when my attorney called.
So at least close to two years now.
And they didn't tell us what store, by the way. They, they just came in and talked about their business.
But anyway, my point with that was they probably have done research long before they ever came to Hooper to say, and someone that does stores know you do research long before you ever disclose the location. So I think they've done their research about coming here. someone that does stores know you do research long before you ever disclose the location, so I think they've done their research about coming here.
Problem I'm having with a lot of this is it's just kind of a moving target, you know, we, we have this survey done, this, you know, hoping that this would give enlightenment, and then the more we look into this, well now maybe it's not right, they're using information that's not applicable to Hooper or, and I, I just, and then we talk about a CRA and now all of a sudden it's a little bit of a moving target, you know, at first I thought it involved, you know, when the gal from the, Stephanie Russell came, I mean she went through all of this and it did, it did apply to residents within a certain district or, but every time we talk about things, there's just something different than what, the second time we talk about it is different than the first time, unless I'm just not understanding it. But you try to come to a conclusion of the information we have and then all of a sudden it's, I say all of a sudden, all of a sudden we're presented something new. How do we get, how do we get the information on a CRA or, you know, I think this developments agreement, a developer's agreement, you know, that, that carries a lot of weight in this, if things can be tied to that to where it's ironclad, if they don't do what the, see my experience with developer agreements hasn't been the posit, most positive because it's not the development, but it's the developer, they find loopholes in the developer's agreement. Some way they're, they're not accountable for things that they, they, we thought they were accountable for, and then we end up in, you know, in things that are not all that positive. How do, how do we get, how do we get to what it actually is, this is what the benefit will be, this is what Hooper City's required to do or not required to do? Where, where do we get to the bottom of all of this? Because every time we presented something, it just has a little different twist to it. The best thing I've heard is this developer's agreement, if everything is ironclad with a developer's agreement, I would feel a little more, you know, a little better about it, but I've also seen where I thought things were pretty ironclad with the developer's agreement with a development we had and it ended up, all they did is fight it, the developers fought it and.
Sue us.
And end up suing it, you know, if they don't get their way, then they sue you, and I, it just seems like it would, if it's right, it should be right for them, it should be right for Hooper City, there shouldn't be anything that we're just trying to say, you know, we're trying to figure out and, but, but you said, you were assigned to this, well, we signed that, but it's not really what we meant type thing, how do we work, how do we work through that?
I guess if the whole, if the whole process of having a final rezone, having a final change in the, in the general plan is contingent on agreeing on a development agreement, you've got to agree before they do it. So it's, now, can, can you guarantee there's not anything in that agreement that, that isn't covered? Nobody can do that, but, but you can certainly put all of your collective minds together and try to make sure everything that you feel strongly about is in that agreement and that they have to comply with it before they actually start digging. And that way you know where you're headed. All of that, including the zoning, would have to be in place before they can actually dig a hole, cause they couldn't get a permit. So, yeah, I, I, I guess I'm not seeing the concerns of, of funding being a big issue if, if that has to be provided some other way other than the city, you just, you make that clear and that's what has to happen, if they can't do it, they won't do it, I guess.
Do we set a precedence for everybody who wants to bring in commercial to add, to add their own subdivisions with their commercial, you know, we, we do this for them and then someone else wants to do commercial, but then they wanna bring in their own base of housing to support their business and, I mean, we've kind of done it for them, are we gonna have to do it for other people? Or be, you know, be at risk for a lawsuit or, I mean, how, how does that work? I mean, this isn't a straight cut commercial development.
The best thing.
Right, and you're not likely to have one like it again either.
Yeah, but I'm just saying, do we set a precedence for, you know, other people to say, well, I, I wanna bring in commercial development, but I have enough land, so I wanna put quarter acre lots and I want you to change this, you do that for them and, and I wanna have additional housing to support my business too.
They can say that and you can grant it or don't grant it, but it's not gonna be the magnitude of this one.
Right, but would they have grounds?
You've got a different argument, I don't say they have legal grounds, they may have a, an argument that they can make to you, you voted for this, why don't you vote for this?
So there would be no legal grounds?
I don't see illegal grounds for that, no.
And I think too, Debbie, we, we always are the say, I mean, that, that's the thing, we, we are always the ones that are in control here. So with the developer agreement, and you're right, Dell, it needs to be written out, and I've, you know this, and I, the last year and a half, and I'm a prevention person, you prevent, I mean, if everything is as written as possible as we can, yes, some things maybe are going to come up, but we maybe can prevent that if as clear as we can have it written, we make it as specific. And Debbie, if someone comes in, like if someone comes in and says we want an apartment complex, are they going to sue us if we say no?
Complex, just smaller lots.
Acres, we can say no.
It doesn't feel like we have the final say, because we told them, we don't want part of the CRA, but here we are, talking about a CRA again. And so it doesn't feel like, yes, we have the final say, that's, I mean, we've been hammering about this CRA for quite a few meetings now, and that was something that the planning commission said we don't want a part of. We said we really didn't want a part of, and now we're still working on a CRA, so no, it, it doesn't feel like what we say is, is, is matters all the time.
Dell's motion was to not have a CRA, right?
Yes, it was.
Motion was to not have a CRA, right?
Yes.
Didn't it carry?
Yeah.
No. Well, cause it wasn't.
It wasn't on the agenda.
Didn't carry for another reason, yeah. Well, there, how much is, is a pump station gonna cost?
Two million, well, we had a bid and the contractor secured for two million, one point nine, and they said they'd hold it. We haven't talked to him recently, but they may or may not.
But my point with, my point with that though, is you guys, you say you've made it clear to them that you don't want a CRA, but then you just scooted around it to me that, did you? I don't know, you've got it on a technicality, so tell them, you know, that's my point is, if we're gonna, I'm not sure he really feels that way. Obviously he's a peer best friend, that's all the time.
Well, you gotta come up with some way of paying for a two million dollar facility, it seems to me.
I'm not saying I'm for it, I'm not entirely sure, I mean, I think he has an inclination, but I don't know, what is, share your thoughts around?
The city doesn't have two million dollars to put in a lift station, we, we don't, or one point nine, so yeah, you're right, Reed, somehow, how are we, how are we going to pay for that?
See, we never have had to, that, that's, we never have had.
Should be asked, how are they gonna pay for it? It's just the cost of development, and I, I just, you know, it just seems like we're getting really a lot of pressure to, to buy something that we're really not sure about, I mean, just pay for it, I mean, Kroger is a billion dollar company. We're the ones that are gonna make the least out of everybody, we're bottom of the totem pole as far as revenue, but granted, yes, it would be a good facility. However, you know, you guys pay for it, that's, that's my position.
But you look at the commercial.
I'm, so let them do pioneer agreements with the other developers, let them handle all that mess, because in the CRA we are supposed to facilitate that, yeah, we take ten percent of the income off of that to facilitate, but why do we want that mess? You know, just do a clean development and be done with it.
So it's not really the Smiths, Smiths has to have the lift station, but the houses are going to use the lift station more than this.
Right, so, so you, so you pay through that through impact fees and pioneer agreements with other developers, they're gonna, they're gonna hook onto that. Yeah, it might be a little bit of work, but, and I suggested that to them, and it just seems like when, they've known this is the problem since day one, but it's, hasn't been addressed, it's like, no, this is, this is how it's gonna be, you're gonna take this or not take it at all. But I think there's another option, you know, I think they, they should pay for it, I don't think, I don't think Hooper residents should pay for any of it.
But we aren't paying for it, that's I guess the difference, I, I don't see where the Hooper residents are paying for it, they will the ones provide the laws.
We are forfeeling some of our revenue, which is not a lot, but, but yeah, we will be, and you, I think you're looking at just financial, but what's gonna come after this development is higher density, it's gonna be pushed right down our throats through the state legislature, I promise you that, there's that legacy corridor, so they're gonna, they're gonna, they're gonna push for higher density all the way down to, to support this project, and, and that's probably gonna happen, and we're not gonna have a lot of say about it. So, yeah, we are gonna pay for it.
Higher density is part of this review in order to get the, you know, to get the retail taxes, you know, the sales tax that we're supposed to have. We don't have enough residents in Hooper to generate the revenue that they would like to see us generate, we'd better have more people.
They're estimating quite an increase in our population to support it.
Which we, um, I mean, we all, we realize people need, I mean, I hear this all the time, this, this housing thing, and we don't, you don't attend a meeting, any, of any group, but you don't hear about the housing, and that's not, that's not always true in every state, you know, you can go in other places and you don't, that's not the focus of their, of their state legislature, but it is here, but it still should be something that, I always go with this standard of life, this standard of living, whatever we're, we wanna make it something, whatever we bring in should improve that, not take away from it, and I would just, I don't know how many meetings I attended where I'd just like someone to, to show us an example, just show us a, an example of what this has done to that area that.
Syracuse City.
Huh?
Syracuse City.
Are they, an example of something that they really wanted and, and now all of a sudden it's put in there, is there, is there standard of living?
Property taxes, the law enforcement and all the infrastructure, I'm sure their promise to their citizens was, oh, we won't raise property taxes. You know, we got commercial coming in, that's gonna pay for everything, and now what happened, they had to raise property taxes.
So I guess my question is, when you redid the general plan and you put commercial along fifty-five hundred, were you really anticipating there would be commercial? Because it doesn't sound like you want commercial.
Well, no, that's, that's not what we're saying at all, we're saying how we get there, you know?
Yes, but, but so.
Not saying that at all.
So I guess, I guess I have a little different perspective on it, I'm as much for rural as anybody, as much as anybody. I am, but the, but our general plan says calls for commercial along fifty-five hundred that was done under, under all of you, that you said commercial along there, and we've had a really excellent commercial opportunity that was presented, Dell, to you when you were mayor, and.
What?
About this development was presented to you before.
No, no, see, you're, you're, you're talking about something that you're making it sound like we had more information than we ever did.
I don't know, I'm just.
Okay, so you don't know.
It started, started, the discussion started.
That's when we, they first came in and said they, they had an interest there.
Yes, so, so we have a place already that we can have commercial, a chance for some commercial zoning. We have a commercial development that wants to come to Hooper, which other mayors are saying we would gladly take it because Smiths do a quality, high quality store, they're not asking for extremely high density, they've said third acre, half acre, and yes, some patio homes in the middle, which is what our planning commission recommended, having it all, that I don't see that they've really came and asked for anything that already you didn't already say you wanted within the general plan. So I guess.
Well, no, they, a lift station is one, you, you put in our way to.
Well, let me ask you, so the other developers that are around there that wanted to develop, was there any, yeah, it's residential, but did, did they ever want the city to help pitch in on the lift station?
They knew we wouldn't, they knew the city couldn't afford it, so they didn't ask.
That's why they haven't developed.
Right.
Right, so, so there again, everyone that's gonna benefit can pitch in through, through impact fees and pioneer agreements and work it that way.
And let them do the work.
Let them do it.
I think the Ross's deal, you know, didn't this, didn't they want the city to get involved to figure out how they were gonna get paid back as they developed that piece of property, and we said, that's on you basically, that's, that's you to figure that out. Like, the city doesn't wanna collect your money and give it to you, you know, so, yeah, let them figure it out.
Yeah, if they wanna, if, if, if they came to us and said, here, we, we've got this figured out for the lift station, this, you know, we wanna build this and then work with us on this housing, this would be an entirely different conversation. But that's not what they're doing, they, like Ryan said, they want us to help them solve their problems, and that's not what the city's for.
Well, the city, if, if you do a pioneering agreement, the city still does it, that's who's doing it with the Ross's. Now, they're gonna get their money back through impact fees that are collected on new lots, and it's the city collecting. This is just a different way for the city to collect the money, and a lot of it's coming from a district that has nothing to do with the city. But if you do pioneering agreements, it's gonna be the city that collects it in impact fees, that's, that's how it's done.
And we'll have to do an impact fee analysis and do a study for that to set the fee.
Didn't Ross's have to collect their own impact fees?
So they, they collected their onsite, the part they were responsible for, and then we will collect something like on the Torrey Galey piece through the impact fee and reimburse them.
So they're part of their development, they collect themselves with their own?
Yeah, they're onsite, yeah, the part that they were, just for them.
Well, I think they sold their lots for a little more money and put it in, yeah.
Yeah.
Did the city do the impact fee study, Jared, who did that? The city did that? And did the city pay for that, for the impact fee?
I have to say them, but I don't know for sure, off the top of my head, I, I believe we did, I mean, if we're gonna charge the impact fee, we have to go through that process.
So there would be some expense then to the city if we had to do that, and then like you said, Reed would be responsible. I, I just, my thinking is, why not let them try, I don't see what we're out. If they go and do and talk to the other entities and come back and say, this is what it is and we don't like it, then at that time we say, we don't like it.
Okay, so what does it take for that to happen? Explain to us then, what it takes for them to just go out and find out this information? That, I think that's the part.
Cause who do we have, we got Dublin handling on the east side, right?
And pitchers.
Pitchers.
On the east side, there's a couple of one lauders, could be an impact fee, but not significant.
So are we gonna force the residents in that lift station zone to connect a sewer? Once that's done?
You can, I, I got a skating call from the state one day, we can't blame it on state law. We can pass our own ordinance and say that if it's available, you have to connect, but we don't currently have that. In new development, we have, we require that, but making it existing.
I'm just, I, I hate to pass along any costs whatsoever to existing residents, you know, to force people to hook up to it. If it's not their choice, it shouldn't be required.
And we, we did that line that's laid down there and actually stubbed in for the future station, all of those homes have a lateral run to them for future, so.
Dell, was your question, what would it take for them to assess the area participation or assess impact fee?
Well, both, yeah, whatever, what is it?
What agreement would they need to have from us, like a conditional agreement based on the development agreement? What do, what would, what do we need to do as a council, be able to give to Terra Estrada so they could go out and start working on the C?
So which, what are they gonna be working on?
If they were working on the CRA to see.
They're working on a CRA that maybe doesn't exclude the city?
Yes, that would include.
I, I don't know, they'd have to tell us that, I don't know.
Because I think when they were here last time, they asked if we would, and then we ran out of time, if we, if we could even give them a conditional agreement that they would give them permission to go do that, but if they do all that, because it was kind of like, well, go do this and this came back good, and then we said, well, okay, this came back good, but we, we still haven't told them they can go ahead and do it, and they spent, you know, like, planning commission said, let's have them do this, so they went, spent thirteen thousand, came back, the numbers were positive, but we still haven't told them we will go ahead with it.
Well, this, this didn't, as this was explained to you, this, this wasn't a totally positive thing, it showed that we were going in the hole on this. And, and the number of residents that it would take to support. And, and the number of residents that it would take to support this is something, how many years down the road did that take us, like thirty?
Twenty, twenty-five, thirty years.
So, so I don't know.
I think it did come back positive, what you're looking at that bottom is showing when it comes out net positive for as far as the sales tax, cause those were the first three years they were building it.
I think what Dell means is it was not the numbers that they told us initially it was going to be, they were lower numbers. Cause initially they told us some grandiose numbers, and um this study did not support the numbers that they told us.
Hundred seventy-three thousand per year.
Hundred seventy-two thousand.
And they had told us somewhere around five hundred.
You guys want Terra Strata to go look into getting participation for the CRA?
Well, it's not the CRA, we were talking about something totally different before we went back to the CRA.
Yeah.
We were talking about pioneering agreements with the.
Well, that's, yeah, that's why I clarified with Dell, I don't know which one you wanted, was it looking into getting pioneering agreements or looking into CRAs, I don't, I just wanna get them to work, I don't want them either.
Well, their interest is in the CRA, and I'm not sure I even understand now, because initially, when we, when the county came and presented that to us, there was responsibilities of those people who live within that district, is how, is the word Stephanie used, they, their taxes would, would increase, but not up to, we only had to go up to a certain mill, she called it, they can only raise their taxes a certain amount.
Sorry, Dell.
To, to pay for that, and uh.
But as we were exploring last time, that, that.
But so, so here we are talking about affordable housing on one hand, and on the other hand, we're saying, but the people that will be building in this affordable housing area, now their property taxes are going to go up to help cover the costs of living there. But it was only limited to them.
Yeah, not, but property taxes won't necessarily, that they would have to pay quite a big impact fee if they're paying for the lift station, but the property taxes won't. Well, maybe then, we just need to decide then, are we willing to let Terra Strata go look into doing a CRA? If, if we're not, then there's no sense even working on some kind of motion.
So a CRA without the city involved, is that what you're saying?
Well, with the city involved or without the city involved, either, either way, I, I don't see, I don't think it looks very positive to say we're don't wanna be involved if they're, like you said, with their bargaining to go say.
It's a sales issue.
Yeah.
But would it justify if you said, look, it shows we're gonna go in the hole the first three years, that's why we don't wanna give up our tax, that's our contribution, but I get here, guys, you're like, you don't want the taxpayers paying for it, and you don't want the city writing checks, but if we use money that would've gone to another taxing entity
and never would've come through us in the first place.
Never would've came to us either way, maybe it's not a bad tool, but I think you just need to decide whether you're.
Here's probably what they're gonna say, is, Hooper's not contributing enough, you need to raise your property tax to contribute more.
Generally, they have policy plans, kinda how it's described to us, uh, they say early on they didn't, but now they have a policy, do you guys have a policy that you're familiar with for, for CRA participation?
Well, we've, we've never done.
Well, but we can find out, I think.
Well, not us, the fire, like the school district generally, they say, this is our policy for CRA participation, and then, you know, Stuart will come and say, Hooper wants to do the CRA, and they'll check the boxes on other policy, and if they're not contributing at certain rates, then they're no go, so.
But one of those boards can say no.
Yeah.
Independently of another one, you know, so.
So I guess if you just set the parameters, we don't want, we, we don't wanna participate, we're not writing any checks, if you can get the school district to pay for your lift station, go for it, I don't know how you feel, I'm just, that's kinda how I'm, in a nutshell, is that really what we're giving the opportunity to ask?
Or do we tell them, hey, go to Doug Hamblin and go to this guy and go to this guy that all wanna develop over here, would they participate with you in building that station?
I mean, one of those was willing to build it originally, just for his development.
He was really close to it, wasn't he? So I think, I mean, that, that's my perspective, if they did the legwork to go to three or four different developers that are gonna participate in this lift station, I think they would get buy-in from every one of them. What percentage or what cost or, you know, how much for each one, that's up to them to figure out.
So this would be more like a pioneering agreement?
Pioneering agreement. Let them pass along the cost to their people.
When they sell lots.
When they sell, you know, just like Ross's did.
But the city has the expense of doing the sewer impact fee first, so we have to pay for that. And then the city would be the one responsible for the pioneering agreement, so it's not like the city's completely washing their hands, and I don't know how much that impact fee study is, I would suspect a few.
Yeah, I don't remember exactly, it's not too significant. But it does include other properties than the ones we've mentioned, that region's quite big, it crosses fifty-five hundred. So there would be other potential.
My shills.
People that are, that would be paying into it eventually that aren't in the picture right now.
Well, but if, are you, are you, let's go back to that CRA issue, if the city doesn't participate in that under the argument that, that was made a minute ago, that you're gonna be putting costs in for other areas anyway, are you opposed to them doing a CRA with the other entities? Seems to me if there's a lift station that's gonna benefit everyone, that maybe the school district oughta pay some, and maybe the county oughta pay some. And maybe the fire district should pay some, I don't know.
If we could make that agreement that Hooper doesn't have to pay any, is, are you even agreeable at, at, to the CRA then, or still not? And, and again, we're not agreeing to it, cause we don't know yet, all we would be agreeing is for them to go try, and if it comes back.
And they'd have the option of doing some of it through agreements with, with developers as well.
I think either way, we end up with an impact fee analysis and an impact fee, cause sooner or later, someone's gonna wanna tie onto that system that isn't in the picture right now.
So the analysis creates basically the area of impact that we have to pay into it at some point.
The area that's serviced by the lift station.
And then it takes their real costs and then deducts what their portion of it is, and the overage they get reimbursed for as those come in, as those impact fees come in.
So I guess that's the question, are you willing to consider some type of CRA if the city's not involved in, or if you're not, then tell them that, and they can decide whether they wanna move ahead on a different basis or not.
Oh, we're talking about two different things here, CRA, or.
I guess to tie those two things together, and I don't mean to overspeak, you know, he's talking, shut up, but with both of them, do they even need, like, our approval to do either of those? You mean, like, do they need a conditional approval to go say, hey, we're gonna do a lift station, me and Doug Hamblin made an agreement, they're gonna pay me back X?
Certainly don't need that for them.
Yeah, and the CRA, if they say, hey, we wanna do this project, and our first city has zero participation, and the fire district's contributing X, do they need your approval for that?
I don't.
They do, they, they.
Well, they need our conditional approval, we're gonna approve the project.
A conditional approval, yes, a, yes, a conditional approval, cause they can't just go to a county and say, because they can go anytime, they do have to have some kind of approval from us, they can't just go to Weaver School District and say, can we do a CRA for Hooper? They'll say, well, is Hooper agreeable to this? Well, no, we don't know, so we have to give them some kind of approval. But again, as it can be a conditional approval, and we put the conditions on it.
So what's our, I mean, besides this, what's our other hangups? You know, I mean, let, put the money aside, CRA aside, everything else aside, what are the other hangups?
I think that's the, the biggest one for me, is just what would it cost, what would it end up costing? Cause it just seems like it always, seems like it always does.
So the commercial, we're, everybody's okay with the commercial development, you had that on the, the map to have commercials, so we're okay with that. Do you have other questions about the housing portion then? I know last time it was brought up about the third acre, the half acre, with some in the middle.
What's in the middle, just patio homes?
Patio homes or?
We've got an ordinance that, for patio homes that is pretty good, you know?
It, it would be beneficial if we could incorporate some moderate income housing. Just a side note, our moderate income housing plan is due August first, and you go back and look at our strategies from last year, and we haven't really done anything towards those strategies as far as moderate income housing.
Okay, so, well, that's, that's another question, but you know, what if your plan isn't complete? I mean, this is the very question we went down and met with, you know, Speaker of the House about, but you were there too, if you have a plan and it's still in the process, it's not complete, are they still having us add on to that, and add on to that? Well, what if we're not even done with this, what if all of our?
Yeah.
And, and I, but the patio homes, uh, these lower lots.
Do they qualify for moderate income? I don't know.
Yeah, they do.
So more patio homes than that are a Ferrari.
Sure.
And it doesn't need to be complete, you're right, Dell, it doesn't need to be complete, but we have to be showing that we're making, we're doing something towards it.
Progress.
So you read what we said last year, we were going to do, and part of even last year's was, cause even last year, this time, we were talking about Smiths, and maybe doing some higher density around that, and we haven't done anything, so now this year, what do we say, well, we're still working on that, and we haven't moved on.
And higher density doesn't always mean moderate income.
No, I'm saying if we specified some, like, whether we specified some moderate.
What, what we.
As part of it, yeah.
You know, what the planning commission recommended was certainly a lot denser by far than three-quarter acre lots, and that's,
They do.
That is what the land use map shows that today. It's all residential zoning with commercial on the front and everything behind is three-quarter acre lots, well, no, we're, we're putting higher density than that.
Yeah.
So back to the original question. If you're okay with the development, aside from the funding, then why don't you just send it back to them, and if, if you're willing to consider a CRA that you're not involved in, they can look into that, if you're not, then they'll have to look at something else, but at least give them some guidance as to where you're at.
Hey, Mayor, what, did they land on about seventy-five houses-ish?
I think it was ninety's.
But, but I think that was when it was all patio, that if you ended up with a third and a half and then some patio, I don't, I don't know, Jared can maybe figure that out for us.
There is some.
So I, I, I know you guys are, you guys are choking on a really big number of two million dollars, what do you think about that? If, if you pass, just, if you passed a hundred percent of that on to those lots, seventy-five lots, that's less than twenty-six grand a lot, impact. So if Smiths fronted half of that for the lift station, the other half got passed on to those lots, that's seventy-five lots, that's thirteen grand a lot, that's nothing. So, I, I mean, that two million's a big number, but I think the hard part is that comes out of Terra Strata's end, and that's why they're pushing so hard for, goes a CRA.
Well, I guess one thing they consider, for them to consider, they cough up the two million, but they do get some of that back. These other developers are gonna have to pay, we don't keep that, we collect it.
That's the point, that would be the pioneering agreement concept. The, uh, what, what you can't do is force this development to pay for the portion of the lift station that doesn't benefit them.
Right.
Right.
So if that lift station's gonna serve us three times the number of houses that they're gonna put in, you can't take all of it out of these houses to keep them, that's illegal.
Right, yeah.
Like they said, they'd have two toilets and no showers, and so they're not going to be using this significant portion of the station, but like you said, the lift station's about to be done by the time the first house is in.
Yeah.
So anyway, go back to that question I asked before, are you willing to let them look at both possible funding methods or not? If not, tell them that, let's be done with it.
And back to my question, what else, what, what else is our hangup? I mean, I'll, I'll be the first one to tell you what my hangup is. From day one, I got the LRB study back, and I saw a hundred seventy-three thousand a year for this monstrosity between one percent sales tax, utility tax, and property tax, we're only making a hundred seventy-three thousand a year over twenty-five years. Seems like a lot of work for that much money of revenue. You know what I mean, I mean, it just seems like, I don't know, and we're banking on all this money being spent at this place to generate that revenue. You know, one percent is measly pennies compared to what the county and state rake in on our dime. It just seems so miniscule compared to what we're trying to get, I don't know, you know, does that make sense?
Well, am I, am I not reading the, the schedule up there right? It looks to me like your revenue's in the fourth year, you're four hundred and forty, four hundred and forty-five thousand, and your expenses are one-seventy-five. There's, there's one that has.
What's the net fiscal benefit at the very bottom?
Well, but that's, that's all.
All the entries together.
But if you take the, if you take the.
The city, county, and city.
Can't you take the four forty-four, which is the city revenue they project? And then subtract from that the total cost of the city of one-seventy-five, uh, that's about three hundred and fifty thou, well, about two hundred and fifty thousand, something like that.
Yeah, that's broken out in here, there's a table that does it.
Plus we get more money on property tax too, not, not just the sales tax.
But that's including that, that's including that, that's the property tax, utility tax, and sales tax, that's all of it together.
Well, the light up there is just the sales tax.
Well, if you took the CRA incentive out for the city, that's ten thousand a year, so you'd add that to your, and you'd reduce the expenses. That's that first line.
Yeah, it's your city revenue, like, year, year four, four forty-four, minus your city expenditures, uh, one-seventy-five.
Which would be one-seventy-five, less than nine thousand, so it'll be one-sixty-five roughly. So that'd be your revenue for the first year for the.
What we did is we added that entire thing up over twenty-five years, and there's a, there's a percentage, I can't remember what the percentage is, it's on another chart. This, it includes inflation, what your dollar is worth today versus what it's worth in twenty-five years, that's where we.
So leverages, so.
Yeah, it was seven, seven million for the twenty-five years, net adjusted with inflation, that's four points, and that's where he's getting the one-seventy-five. So they actually projected it out for the twenty-five years.
Ryan, what did Kami tell you that she saw Caseville make? I know she talked to you upfront and said it was significantly more than this, LRB has said this is worst-case scenario. And I know Kami, who did the taxes for Caseville, and it was significantly higher than this, and every store I called, it was significantly higher than this. And again, I guess my question is, why did we put then, we want commercial, if we're really now saying, do we want commercial or are we?
We do want commercial, do we, do we want this?
But what? But what commercial is going to?
This is option A, and that's the only option we've ever been told about, like, where's B, C, and D?
But what commercial is going to bring us more revenue than a grocery store?
Do we have another offer?
Well, you heard the Roy mayor, what did he say brings them the very most revenue?
And internet, and internet sales, you forgot that portion of his speech.
The grocery stores. Yeah, but the grocery stores, yeah, by far, any mayor will tell you the very most tax revenue they get is from a grocery store, it is.
One percent, we still sold one percent.
It is, but it's one percent more than we're going to get from any other place, I, I guess I look at this, so, you know, maybe if it is, and even one of it's only two hundred thousand, one or ten years down the road, it's a half a million, it's more than we have now, right?
What are the consequences for having it? What, what are the adverse effects of having it? Is it worth two hundred thousand?
Yeah, so I guess I'm not seeing maybe the adverse effects.
Well, you look at.
You are.
You look at.
Traffic.
You look at West Point and you look at Caseville, they have a lot higher density than we do, and I drive by the Caseville, yeah, it's a nice place, but look around it, you know, look, that, that's what Hooper will become.
Right.
That's, that's exactly what it'll become, is just like West Caseville.
And my friends, I, I have numerous friends. And my friends, I, I have numerous friends that live there because I worked in Davis County and, and I worked the Kaysville, Kaysville West, uh, Kenny, whatever it is, area. But, uh, they said that it completely changed their city. And they, in retaliation, they won't shop there, they go to Bolins.
So I guess the question is then, are you saying then you don't even want this development at all? It's not even the CRA, you just plain don't want the development?
That's why I asked the question, what are our other issues?
Yeah, what, what it is that.
I, I'm just wondering, like Ryan, is it, is it worth it? I mean, especially for the small amount that we're getting for what it's going to impact our city. And the CRA is, is, I'm, I'm not for the CRA at all. And, uh, I just wonder if, if it's worth it to Hooper or if we should go out there and solicit. You know, see what we can solicit. I, I think a smaller store would be great out here.
So again, at the time we've been on city council, have you solicited any stores? Have any stores came to you? What other options have you had?
Well, we had other things going on that we've been doing, we haven't had time, but, you know, there's committees that we could set up, there's lots of things. I mean, to be honest, we, we were never put in a spot budget-wise that we were in such a financial problem. Um, we were going along and doing okay. So this is, now we're in a financial horrible situation. So now it's more important than ever, so, uh, but like before.
But I mean, tw- twenty-five years, we balance the budget every single year, right?
Right, right, we've never had a problem.
We were never told, oh, we gotta put in commercial today because we're gonna be unincorporated, we're gonna go back to the county.
Right.
You know, I, I'm kinda tired of hearing that because twenty-five years, that hasn't even been an option. And now all of a sudden it is, you know, just because we don't have commercial. And so how urgent really is it? You know, we balanced the budget every single year and had extra every single year. You know, we've never gone in the hole, we've never increased poverty taxes in twenty-five years, we haven't used that tool at all once. And now we're talking about unincorporating because we're in the hole so bad. You know, I, I just don't buy it, you know?
So, so not to get off, but because you brought it up, let's, let's talk about this really quickly then. So you have a brand new sewer system and you have brand new sewer pumps and so I'm sure no one thought we should save money to have sewer pumps. And so we didn't. Now we don't have a brand new sewer system. We have an eighteen-year-old sewer system that we still owe seven million dollars for and we have pumps that are failing. I already sent you all that email because we had the one pump that failed, there's two pumps that run, one pump, then the next pump, then the next pump. The pump that hasn't failed yet is every bit as old. Do we have money set aside in our sewer to buy, Jared would know how many new pumps? We don't. We saved up so many years to be able to do road projects, so now this year we're doing some road projects. How many years are we going to have to save up until we do? So it's not a matter, we're not balancing the budget, absolutely, we have to because we live in the state of Utah, we balance our budget. But do we have any money set aside to take care of a city now that is twenty-five years old, that does have things that need to be fixed? And we have never saved money to fix them. Jared and I talk almost daily about road projects that need to be done, about pipes underneath roads that are failing. We have this road, we're gonna blacktop, but underneath the road is a pipe that's going to collapse. So do we pay the money and blacktop the road? Or do we take money that we don't have to fix the pipe first before we blacktop the road? We are a city, this been a city here for twenty-five years and what are we doing to save money to progress that city forward and we haven't? And all of you sat through all of those budget meetings and did any of you see millions of dollars left over to fix? Because if we fixed every project on Jared's list, if we fixed half the projects on Jared's list, we would be through every dime we have in the city and he could probably today give us ten more projects that need to be done.
So two hundred thousand a year is gonna fix all that?
It's better than zero, isn't it? Where, so where do we start?
But what about, what that's going to impact those roads and our sewer and everything?
But, but again, but let's talk about it. If I already mentioned, I drive a fifty-five hundred, whether I go to Kent's, whether I go to Winkle, whether I go to Harmon's, who gets my money when I go to Kent's? Not Hooper and I still have to drive on the road.
But what I'm saying is, we still, we would require so many more people coming to Hooper to shop there to get the revenue that we need.
Not coming from Hooper up our roads. They would have, they'd be going across to none other roads, not ours. They might be coming down from Roe. Roy, fifty-five hundred's not our road.
Forty-seven hundred is our road.
It is, it, half of it, half of forty-seven's our road, yeah, not all of it.
In fact, Smith's is our road.
Yeah. But, but so I think we're putting our head in the sand if we keep saying, Hooper, we're doing fine financially, we aren't. And so we've had somebody come along that already presented an idea before I was here, here, here's something that could help. And now we're just saying, we, we zoned something for commercial in our future use, now commercial wants to come and we say, no, we don't really want you.
And, and that's, that's not what it is, it's, does the cost outweigh?
The benefit.
The benefits. That's, that's what I'm looking at. I have to do that at home.
Sure.
Is, is buying this gonna outweigh, you know, what I'm paying for it, i- i- the benefits or, or what? And that's what I'm looking at for the city is, is what we're gonna have to do here going that way, what we're getting for it.
Yeah, and I, and I think it does, I think the study showed it did. You talk to any other mayor in Weber County, they will tell you, yes, that's how their cities stay afloat, is they have commercial. You know, Reed had me right to the get-go to call some of the other Smiths, which I did. And I presented those numbers, but it didn't really matter because clearly those numbers were in a positive. But we have to start somewhere, we can't just say, well, we don't wanna now, we need the money now, well, two years from now, we need the money now. Well, how do we ever get that if we don't start somewhere?
Right, but they didn't come to us with a clean, a clean, um, situation. They, they came to us with a lot of, but, you know, the lift station and the houses and everything else. No one just came and presented us a commercial development.
Well, the lift station was there before then.
Right, but no one just came to us and said, I'll take care of that.
That we still, by the way, we owe eighty-five thousand dollars still for the design of the lift station, which we haven't paid.
And, and, but, you know, if they didn't just come to us and say, I'll take care of the infrastructure that's needed for my project, here, we would like to do a commercial project in your city. That's what I would have really, really appreciated from someone. And we, we've got all these extra things attached to it. So, you know, it's like, are, are they worth it?
So again then, I guess we just need to decide what it is you really want then. You're not even okay with the development, you're okay with the development, not the CRA?
I think ultimately you make money out of the development, you're certainly not gonna lose money out of the development, you probably make a lot of money. Maybe not a lot, but you're not gonna lose money. Uh, it looks like it's gonna cost you at the maximum maybe, what, hundred thou-, sixty thousand dollars in the third year or something like that. Uh, assuming that those numbers are right, which I question. I think the bigger issue than, than the money is, do you wanna have this in your city? And if you do, if, if it's a convenience for the people in the city and if they wanna have a grocery store and the things that come along with it, restaurants and so forth close by, you do it, if you don't, then you don't. And, and I, I'm kinda biased because I live in an area where all those things are there. And, uh, my wife would die if I told her she had to drive ten miles to get to a grocery store.
We drive five miles to everything we can have to.
So I, you know, that's in my mind, a bigger issue is, uh, if you're gonna be a city, shouldn't you have those kind of things in a city? And if you're gonna have these things, is there a better opportunity than the one you have here? Maybe, but I don't see it coming along anytime soon because if you don't take this one, they're gonna build somewhere else close by and that's gonna defeat anybody else wanting to come in here and build, I think. So that's the issue in my mind. I don't think the money is as big an issue as all of you do because I think it'll all work out. Uh, and if you wanna tell them they have to do a pioneering agreement, they'll probably figure out a way to do that. If you wanna use a CRA that doesn't involve the city, they can probably do that. The bigger issue is, do you wanna have the development or don't you wanna have the development?
Where's Lisa?
Where's, where's my eight ball when I needed it?
Give you the answer.
Well, you know, again, that's what I think then, if, we just need to decide, like Reed's saying, what you want. Because again, it was going to be a conditional approval, we put the conditions on it. If, if you don't want the CRA, if you do want it, let them go try. If we don't, I think like Reed said, they can come up with whatever, but you need to decide if it's even something you're even. I mean, I thought as of last meeting, everybody was a little more agreeable because, you know, Dell, you'd made the motion and Ryan, or excuse me, Bryce, you had seconded it. And then the others, I thought, didn't because it wasn't what the motion was on the agenda. But now are you saying, well, I don't know, I honestly don't know now what we're saying.
How do you feel?
I, you know, well, just, just like I, um, said to begin with, I could look at something and reasonably feel like, okay, this, this really is the straight stuff. This is, this is, this is what, this is what they're willing to do and they're, you know. I, I think, I, I think we wanna see development, not development. I think we want to see some type of commercial, that's, that's why we have a commercial area. But I look back at, you know, what, what were, and you go back to what do the citizens want? Well, no one wanted a big box store. And I don't know if that's, this is considered that, I think they, but some of them just wanted that feel of, even, even to say that there would be like a, a walkable main street. I know that when we had our meetings, which I wish, I think some of us were part of that. Um, it means where you, you have a main street, you can walk down and there's a grocery store, there's other shops, there's, and you know, that might be, it is a lot different than any, anything else around us. But I'm not convinced that everything around us, including Kaysville, Syracuse, West Point, they, they're, that's not a convincing, uh, sell for me that this is working in their cities because of everything that's happened since. Plain City, maybe. You know, that was a little smaller store, uh, Kent's Market that went out there, I think it really did, uh, help them a lot. They've got some other, you know, other businesses around it, Credit Union and whatnot. But the higher density around it, that didn't, you know, that's not really part of it. So I feel like, you know, this, uh, I think we want this business, but when we, we put that motion out there before, it was just, it was a motion that this, we would like them to come on our, our terms, you know, and, and not just have something forced on us and use some, you know, I felt like there was a tactic like if we don't do this, we will be, you know, we will be disincorporated and move back as a, back into the county. Or maybe even Roy's city will be annex us into them. I mean, those were stories that were going around, I don't know where they started. But, uh, I've never had that fear of that happening. So I'm, I'm for looking at, uh, a grocery store and I think if we, we just look at our terms.
So what are the terms?
Well, you know, I, I thought we laid them out, you know, I think our terms was that, you know, um, the grocery store was built first. Uh, we have, we don't have any part of the lift station. The dense, uh, there was a patio to type zoning behind it that requires a forty percent of that is open space. I think we, I don't know if we all agreed with changing the residential lots, but it seemed like that around the west and north side of that, there could be some single, uh, family housing where they actually owned the lot. It, it wasn't a patio type, they actually owned a third acre lot.
What is the forty percent open space, is it a park or is it something else?
It could be.
It could, it's grass.
Kinda all-inclusive, yeah?
Yeah, it could be.
I think it excluded roads, but it include yards and.
Yards, that's, that's an HOA owned and managed or something.
Anything that's common ground.
That could be common ground.
Well, no, not even common ground, like the patio homes, even their own lawns on their.
But they don't own it, see, that's still.
It's part of that forty percent.
We have an ordinance for it either way.
Yeah, we have an ordinance.
So if you do it, it's quasi-secure.
Yeah, it's gonna make a reference ordinance, they would just like contribute it.
Could be, yeah, it could even be a playground or it could be a pickleball court that like they put in over there, things like that. It could be a, anyway, just common ground. Anyway, that's, that's my thought. If, and if we could zero in on those things, I, I was pretty comfortable with what the planning commission recommended. And it seemed like it, it fit the bill. The thing, the thing we've gotta appreciate is the fact that our general plan is not that old. And there were many that participated in that, they participated in the surveys, we had the, the work group meetings and, I think we, we got a, we had a real good feel for how, I mean, the peo-, the reason people, they're moving away from places like.
Syracuse.
Like a, or, or a Kaysville, I mean, we, I could take you right to the home of someone that moved right from Kaysville. You're, you're a friend with it, the reason they came here is because of the, a certain feel Hooper had and, I don't think there's anything wrong with that, you know, being just a little bit different. But if we're different, people might want to move here to have that too.
For that reason as well, so you got, you got all, all those issues.
So, so.
All right, so is that, is that a consensus that you want those kind of things or no? Well, like I said last time, I, I don't, because they told us upfront, no CRA, no project, so maybe we're just calling their bluff.
And, and if, if that's what they're saying, then I, then I.
So is that what they're saying? Well, that's what they said.
They, they tell us that, but to your point.
Well, it's, it's like, here's, here's, here's the deal, they, they have, they brought us a deal and we're the only ones budging. We're the only ones making concessions, they haven't budged at all, other than the housing component can all be worked out. I mean, that's not a big deal to me, but they haven't budgeted at all when we have, or we've been required to. So, um, so I'm okay to call, you know, like, hey, if you can't do this, then it's not gonna work for us.
Yeah, I, I think we, I think we've, I feel the same way about that if you can't, coming on our terms.
You guys feel the same way, Ryan, you did it?
About the CRA?
No, no, just about, but the mo-, it was essentially the motion they got put forward, the, the, the character, just that same motion. And then irrelevant of whether Terra Strata is, you know, if they're really gonna do that or not, I don't know.
Well, you'd think we would've had that answer two times ago when we sat down with them, you know, because we said, we don't want a CRA. And we never got a response, yes or no or one.
Well, then I'd see if we made any, they stick around for a reason.
That's, that's, that is a concerning part right there, it's like, I thought we were pretty clear, I think we were pretty clear. I'd like to begin with.
One thing I just, not towards with what you said, but you said no city participation, so I could view that as no CRA at all. Or I could view that as the CRA but not Hooper City participating. Do we really care if the other entities give their money towards it? That's a question, just for clarity.
Like, more like a pioneering agreement.
Well, no, if, if the school district.
Oh, the school, I see, the school district. It'd be the school district and the water, all those will explain part of it.
Oh, yeah, okay, I, I see, I see what you mean, Jared, I. Yeah, I don't.
Either way, our taxpayers are gonna pay that money, it's just, does it go to, to the school district's coffers? Or if they're willing to give up a certain percentage to pay for this lift station?
Yeah, it's all taxpayers, not just, not just a municipal area, it's the entire city.
Yeah, yeah, the CRA.
Well, even, yeah, everything's taxpayer, even if you do a pioneering agreement.
Well, even, yeah, everything's taxpayer, even if you do a pioneering agreement, it's the people buying the homes that are paying the cost, it's not anyone else.
Well, back to Jared's question then, if the city, if we say we don't wanna participate in the CRA and the money's coming from other entities, do we care if the school district's willing to give up so much money and the sewer district is, and the fire district, and the county, and mosquito abatement? Then do, do we care?
I don't think so. I think that, at this point, the CRA is a non-issue. I'll agree to saying, do we want it in our city or do we not?
From, from my standpoint, I, I have to vote, I have to go with what the people in my district are telling me. I get a lot of emails and they're all from, from down, from west, from the west part of Hooper. And that say, we want it, and they're all, they're, I, they're all from west Hooper. The emails that I get that say, please don't bring that into the city, are from my district. I have to vote the way my district feels, my, my, my district does not want the Smiths. And that's just plain and simple, and I have to, I have to support them. And no matter how I feel about it.
Even in the freedom, in the Wildwood area, Freedom area, they don't want it either.
I get, I get more emails from them saying they don't want it than I do that they do. I, I get a few, but the majority of the ones that say they wanted it from west Hooper. And so I have to go with what I hear and what I get from the district. I can't make it up, you know, I can't go with, I can't go with what I thinks best, or, or what everyone else thinks is best. I have to go with what they think is best, and it affects them, this affects them. And I've heard a lot of people from west Hooper say, well, it's almost Roy. It's, it's so close to Roy, it really doesn't matter. Uh-huh, and, and that's, I've, I've heard that a lot, it's so close to Roy, it really doesn't matter, we should have the Smiths. And I, I look who they are, I, I've done a lot of research on where I get emails from. And, you know, like I said, I've gotten some from west, from east Hooper that want it. I, I'm not gonna say I don't, cause I do get some, but the majority, the bulk of them do not want it. And that's, that's where I have to go.
Can I read you a text I just got yesterday from your district? I think this is Jenny's, is Jenny's Park, fifty-three hundred, fifty-three fifty. This person says, nobody in our entire area wants the Smiths. There are several that will move if it's approved. Personally, I'm against it, I moved from Layton to get away from apartments, traffic, and all the businesses. I moved to Hooper because it didn't have any of that, I don't think the Smiths is the savior for Hooper. Um, the developers will expect Hooper to pay for the lift station and the infrastructure. They'll also want sales and property tax credits. Weaver County Sheriff, emergency services will increase their fees, which all residents will pay. Central Weaver will increase their fees, which all residents will pay. Crime and traffic will increase, if it is approved, the city will have established precedents and have to approve all future rezoning applications or face lawsuits. Anyway, that's, that's the gist of it.
And that's the kind of thing that I do.
They can't say everybody doesn't though, because I could tell you.
No, you can't say.
I'm not saying everybody doesn't, I'm saying that.
That's just one step.
That the bulk of what I get is that they don't want them, I do get some that want it.
Sure.
But the bulk, and I have to go with the majority of what my district wants.
What sent you emails?
Okay, so that's, that's, that's yours, that's David's.
That's my district.
So I got the other three here and one that's not here, what, what do you wanna do? I'm tired of working on it. If you're not gonna do it, let's stop it.
And that's, that's just me, you know, that, that's what I have to go with.
That's how I feel too, I mean, I'm trying to represent the community, right, as in that large council. And I'm trying to keep my ear out there, who's saying yea and who's saying no. And I'd say it's probably seventy, thirty, no, if I was to guess.
And representing the people in your, your areas is important, but keep in mind that people in your area don't have to run a city. So you gotta think about what's best for the city, and that's why you're elected, to educate yourself and, and decide those issues.
And I look at what went, what happened to West Haven, and they represented the city and they made decisions and they ran them all out of town. They were all voted out of office, and they got a whole new council now. Because all the residents were so disapproving of what happened over there.
Well, we did hear that quite often, just don't let us become like West Haven. But I just wanna be us here in Hooper. And I think we, well, I'm just gonna, I'll just repeat myself. When we went through the general plan, we had a lot of participation with work groups. And I don't think anyone envisioned this type of commercial development coming to Hooper. It's, it's just bigger than what anybody, because, again, the bigger the, this, the bigger the business, the more people it takes to support it, to even generate the types of income that they're claiming they'll have. And if that's the case, then that means we, it takes more people to live out here. Growing faster than maybe we can even take care of them. We're, I think Hooper is a lot different than other cities, I think we're, it's just, it's challenging. Because we just don't move anything without mechanically moving it, nothing's downhill from this.
And back to your point about Plain City, I think if this was that development, I think every one of us would've said yes two months ago.
I, I think, I could, I'd agree with you, that, that size of store and no other strings attached. I mean, I, in fact, if I recall my very words, when Stuart first came, it's like, we don't even have to really change anything as long as there's no strings attached. Yeah, the, you know, the land use map provides for this, for a development of this type, you know, commercial development. The zoning, since it's all zoned, or, you know, the land use map shows it's all residential, but there's nothing that would have to change as long as there's no strings attached. And I, I still feel the same way, and...
So really, Smiths can come with no, I mean, they can come, because you have in your future land use commercial. So there, that's not even, so I guess, I don't know why we're even then discussing, cause just like you said, based on that, there's no strings attached, so if you're not requiring them to do a CRA.
Well, the strings attached for the house, is the housing though.
But, but if, but if the housing wasn't, so really the Smiths could do whatever, because they can, because we have that. And so then you're saying if.
Well, I, but I don't want you to play on my words, like trying to make it sound something different than what I, my intent is.
Well, to Dale's, we were told that the housing component had to go along with the Smiths, else it wouldn't work, we were told that. So, so there were strings attached, I guess, cause we would have chain zoning and whatnot, so.
So you're thinking Smiths, but leave it the three-quarter acre?
Well, I, I didn't say that, I just said there were strings, that there were components, that the requirements to meet their needs, we had to change. And that's, I think what Dale was getting at, so.
And I think Plain City is a good comparison.
Like I've said, I wish there was option B and C.
There what?
I wish there was option B and C. From day one, option A was just never in my.
Maybe there is too.
My way of thinking, I wish an entire really different developer would walk in the door right now and say, hey, I can do this for you. Oh, let's talk about that, you know, or Stuart, even mentioning something different, but he's just the Smiths guy, that's all he is, is the Smiths guy, you know?
Not necessarily, he's a broker for a lot of them, but that's what I asked you, Associated Foods. And food, which is your kids' and your smaller ones too. But that's, I guess, I asked you, so in, you've been here, Ryan, nine and a half years, has anybody else came?
Well, you keep, so, there's a little bit of twist to that, you know, yeah, because we're out on the peninsula, but there's some information that's well-known now, that maybe we didn't know two years ago, where a main corridor is gonna come through, and so that changes everything. I think to say that no one else has came is kind of an unfair statement, because Hooper is evolving and we have a lot of open land. So I think to Ryan's point, hey, this is the first person we're dating, are we gonna marry, do you marry the first person you date? Some do.
That color corridor, it's been on the books for years.
Well, well, it's been all over, the, the, that corridor has been.
But the timing, the timing.
It never did come off fifty-one hundred.
Fifty-one hundred's been on the corridor since two thousand and five.
But it, it's had, it's had, it's had other ones too.
It's, it's.
Because I'm on that.
So why, why is that, I mean, just, just, no, no, you're the one that brought this up.
Well, let, forget not to.
Well, clearly the corridor's been built now, and it's, it's gonna be, it's gonna be expanded.
Well, they've, they've got, they've got a problem once they get north of four thousand now, they, they gotta, the environmental study will not let them put the road where they had planned. And the fact is, that lot, that piece of property that sits up on the east church, on the west side of it, was left there for the corridor that was gonna go down forty-seven hundred, that, that's what it's there for. So no, it just hasn't, this is, this has been all over, it hasn't been settled in on fifty-one hundred west for that many years.
They were gonna move down the, the west side of our property, down the.
Yeah, the city actually set space aside early on for it.
Yeah.
We did.
It's a long time.
Well, okay, so where do we wanna move from here then? Like Reed said, you know, we've talked about this lots and lots.
Talked about it all. The, the staff feedback, so correct me if I'm wrong, cause I don't wanna go do bidding, that is a waste of time. The staff feedback for me would be, there's no interest in a CRA. You could explore pioneering and bring it forward, and then other than that, I mean, there, there are some facts here, he did pay for an application before me, he did for a rezon. And he, he could come for his rezon with the project, that's been one, you guys could vote on it, just a rezon for the project, no CRA, no conditional re, no conditional approval, just, how you get a rezon and you could, you could vote on it. And so he could bring his project, but I mean, just for his feedback, no, you know, there's no interest for a CRA and you could go explore pioneer. Is that accurate? And then if he liked to finish out his application, if he did pay money, you know what I mean, he did go through some, some iterations of the site, then he could bring his rezon request to officially get approval or denial, I think he's entitled to that. And then he couldn't be hurt again for a year, if it got him.
And the rezon has to be for the commercial also, or just for the three-quarter acre?
I think just for the three-quarter acre residential, I think that the commercial.
Already established.
I mean, we do have two commercials, right, but it seems to, it seems that it could work, that, that could be up for a little interpretation, but.
But you've, you've gotta change the land use map before you ever consider a rezon, it's not allowable right now.
Yeah.
Commercial is.
Commercial is.
The commercial is.
Well, not this, not, not the commercial.
So we could have, fill out his application to open the general plan.
No, we're.
The commercial actually would need to be changed too, because this is a C two, where it's, we don't have a C two.
We don't have a C zoning.
We have a C one and a C two, one small neighborhood, girlfriend and one's major.
The use map.
Yeah, this would definitely be in the major, so we could look at what our future is, but I wanted to say it wasn't mine, but I'd have to look.
Yeah.
C two's major, we got a C two?
Yeah, we do, yeah, in, in the general plan it does list them both, and this is just listed commercial.
So I mean, back to the same question, I would hate to go through all of this and come to the day of a vote, and we're gonna disapprove it.
Yeah.
Anyway, you know what I mean?
Yeah, I don't have to go out and find other funding for the lift station and then still get it.
Disapproved, just because we don't like it, or whatever reason, so.
Right, that's why he doesn't wanna do that, that's.
Well, that's not fair for us to do that to him either.
No.
I already feel like we've been a little unfair, because like you said, we said, go do this, you know, impact study, and they did, and they paid that money, and then they came back and then we're still, it's been a year.
Well, but that wasn't a po, see, that didn't come back positive to me. If I were to base it on that impact study that he, we set him up to do, then my vote tonight would be no.
Oh, LRB will tell you it's absolutely positive, that, that's what they're thinking, isn't it?
Well, he's appreciated.
They say positive.
It's positive because it's not a negative number, so it could be one and it'd be positive. It's hard to put a figure, a monetary figure on impacts to the city, you know what I mean? Traffic, population growth, how do you, how do you quantify the impact, a dollar amount, you know, to the city?
No, here's your map, it's all just, it's just commercial.
I think our current zone right now is split off as C one, C two, but our future land use just has general, commercial, like, personal.
Where'd they put our, uh, where'd they put our current one in here, is it just in our general plan? Is that made?
There's a few things, yeah.
Well.
Totally.
Yeah.
So Debbie, there's nothing that would sway you to a yes, sounds like.
I can reach out to some people and.
How about tonight?
Reach out to him tonight?
I don't see anything on the current, I don't, I think the future has the commercial across it, and I don't think it specifies C one or C two. So I mean, if you want to make that distinction, but it's kind of a technicality, it's commercial nonetheless, but.
I think the plan, the, the future plan, uh, future land use plan just designates commercial, it wouldn't be until you zone it, you decide what the zone will be.
Yeah.
Sure.
Let's talk about this corner. If anybody approaches on developing that corner.
Yeah, let's don't move on till we finish what we're.
No, I'm just saying, you meant you talked about people approaching us in the last twenty-five years. That's a prime piece of property that could be developed as commercial, has anybody said a word about that?
Well, we talked to the owner one day.
Yeah, he said he promised he'd grant, cause he's gonna put a Chick-fil-A there.
Okay.
There you go.
Yeah, C one, C one would be more like your mom and pop, C two would, it would be a C two for sure, it's your, you know? Not, not just a local shopping, it'd be more of a regional or whatever that term is, a community.
Yeah, that kinda makes sense too, you build a grocery store that Hooper shops at, or you build a marketplace that we're pulling people from all over, which, you know, I guess that's the difference between a C one and a C two.
Well, so what direction do you want us to give to them then, we're still undecided? You know, we haven't really came up with anything, no one's, I mean, it sounds like.
Well, let's get, let's get over the first hurdle, are you, is there not gonna be a CRA, is that out of the question? For me, okay, is, is that what everyone says?
In what definition, just Hooper participation or all together?
Without, well, it's pretty clear you don't want it with Hooper participation.
For sure.
But without Hooper participation, is that something acceptable or not?
The question is, is it type of.
So who's gonna, who's gonna administrate it, someone would have to.
Yeah, I don't know, that even could exist, you're, they got the establishment agency, and someone asks them, so, if Hooper's not participating, I think it's a reality. I don't hold that any more.
Totally, that's, I mean, I mean, I'm, I'm, I'm with Debbie, I've, I've had people to reach out to me on both sides. So it's really kind of like, you know, what do you do, what do you do what's hopefully best long-term, but, um... I don't know, but, but definitely for me, if, if there's a CRA, I'm out, I mean, I'll, I'll wait for the next.
So CRA with, with or without Hooper's participation?
Well, all together. Yeah, just, yeah.
Okay.
So more of a pioneering agreement, is what you're saying? Sure, yeah, let them figure out how they're gonna get paid back on the lift station. And we might have some, but by then our probably, impact fees will have increased and so we'll make money on that as well. Anyway, that's, that's where I'm at, so.
Dale, where are you?
I'd agree with that, the motion I made, I.
You said no CRA in your motion, is that what you're saying still?
Right, right, no, no CRA, Hooper City wouldn't, wouldn't be involved in that.
Well, a CRA without Hooper's involvement. Well, the CRA without Hooper's involved.
Yeah, right.
You wouldn't have that either.
No, we're.
Okay, if there's a CRA, but Hooper's not involved in the CRA, are you okay with that or not?
Well, I think that I'd be more inclined.
There, there again, the question would be who administrates it?
Yeah.
Wouldn't be the city.
Wouldn't be the city, right?
It would not be the city.
I don't.
So I, I don't know.
I think that sometimes you have like a bank or somebody that actually does the CRA, because the one time when they came, there was that, I can't remember his name, so I don't even wanna say, 'cause I'll say it wrong. He's the one that does CRAs, so it would be an outside entity.
The county would somewhat be involved, so that one's collecting the tax, and they'd have to give whatever portions agree to, whatever entity is, is the financier.
Honestly, I just wish I could just know what's in, involved without any, without any difference in opinion. This is just the way it is. The way we've talked about tonight, I've had more people not interested. I'm not saying I get hundreds of people, you know, telling me no or yes, but most people do not want, they want business, but not one like this, not a Smiths marketplace.
So back to Reid's question then, on the CRA, then you would not be in favor of a CRA, even if the city wasn't a part of it?
No, I'm not interested in CRA.
No matter what?
Right.
Okay.
So that's three that are not interested.
It's easy to say, no matter what you think. Staff feedback is no CRA.
All right, so, so I guess the next question is, are you okay with what we're talking about if it's done with something other than CRA, which would be, I presume, impact fees? And pioneering agreement?
Well, that's pretty normal, right? That's normal in any development. If you go buy a lot, there's an impact fee that, so you can sewer your home.
You're requiring the people that use the sewer to pay for the sewer, that's what you're doing.
So I guess that's what everybody's agreeable to, if they're not agreeable to the CRA, right? Impact fees, okay, what's next then?
Okay, the next question would be, are you okay with development homes? If you do patio homes and the things that were suggested in the planning commission, or not?
Yeah, if it followed our patio home ordinance, and, yeah, I thought, that would be good with me. I mean, that, we don't try to adjust it, we don't try to.
But the suggestion of the planning commission, you'd be okay with?
Yes.
And that was, what, patio homes and?
They said all patio homes, but some city council members had said they like the half acre, third acre, and patio homes.
Just around the edge, but then they also recommend like a fifty-five and older type development, you know, so that it wasn't, anything that was.
I think that's the small hurdle, the housing component.
That, that's a small hurdle.
Yeah, I don't like the fifty-five and older personally, because I think you wanna have room for kids to buy homes.
Sure. And if it was affordable, I, you know, I think everybody would.
Well, if that's not a hurdle, and I, are you, basically, if, if they're willing to move ahead without a CRA, are you okay with moving ahead with it? And that would be a question you'd, I guess you'd have to ask them, if they aren't, then we're done. If they are, then, then we can consider crafting a motion and go back to your motion, basically, uh, and, and pass it. You got there through components, and now we'll be there for the, for the total.
So I wrote down no CRA, completely independent, whether Hooper does or not, no CRA. So that then was the pioneering agreement, which has to do with impact fees. As far as the homes, it was the third acre, half acre patio homes, not agreeable to fifty-five and older, 'cause some say it'd be nice to have some youngers.
I'd said that, I don't know that he had said that.
I think the one over that we had by Sinclair's, really, now you don't even know it's there. Also, they, I know the planning commission spoke to, that the Smiths would go in before the housing. At least it needs to be, you know, proportionately, like, you can't build all the houses and then just leave.
No, we have to have some kind of guarantee.
A significant part, a significant portion needs to be, and even it could be the retail pads out front, I don't know.
And my question there would be where Stuart made it clear that he was not a residential developer. That the, see, to me, the, the loophole would be, well, okay, then he sells that, well, someone else is developing, you know, and we don't have the Smiths very far along, but now they're starting to, it's not my.
Wouldn't let him do it.
Okay.
You're not gonna grant any building permits until.
Okay, see, if, as long as that is.
That's all part of the.
We would have to have some houses, so to pay for the lift station. 'Cause remember, you have this two million dollar lift station, and you've got to have these homes paying their impact fees to be able to pay that two million dollars, right? Or you're, am I misunderstanding, or you're thinking you just want Smiths to pay the full two million upfront, and then get that later from the houses, or are we getting that from the houses?
I think they're talking about that, plus going to other people who own land and seeing if they'll contribute to it.
So that's something we'd have to agree with, how much part of the Smiths is done in conjunction with the houses.
You couldn't expect Smiths pay for more than what they, they use.
I mean, we wouldn't even know about, we wouldn't. If you worked something out with Doug Hamlin, or, that's, I don't think that's something we would even need to.
Well, except for the city does the pioneering agreement, right? Isn't that what you said with Rossins, the city was open that, so we, we wouldn't know that.
Well, because we click, we click the.
Yes.
If Doug just gives them cash money to go towards it, we don't need to be involved in that.
Well, that's not an impact fee then, they just sell the houses for more and they get the money back.
Yeah, if we're gonna charge an impact.
So maybe that's, you can, or you could prioritize that. Say your priority is not to have a pioneering agreement at all, they collect it all upfront, and they just increase the price of the house when they sell it to recover it. That's not what's been done in the past, you're right. In the past, we've agreed to impose an impact fee and get them paid back through an impact fee.
Yeah, and I, I, I think that if they're, if they're going to do something that, that they would need to at least build the Smiths in conjunction with housing. I, you know, he talked about doing all the housing pretty much first, and the Smiths, the commercial, because that's where we make the money. The commercial would have to be built along with housing.
Is there middle ground that you just set like some parameters? The Smiths has to be so far along, and you get one phase of housing, meet another goal, you get two phases.
But there's gotta be significant building, I think, so you know that the commercial's gonna go in.
I would assume once they pull a building permit and start, they're not gonna linger, they're gonna keep building the Smiths.
Smiths, Smiths will put a deadline on the development, because once they start making payments, they're gonna want the keys to that building, so they'll have, they'll have a date for it pretty quick.
So am I reading it right, that if, if Smiths is willing to go ahead with arranging this whole thing without using a CRA, that you're okay with what was recommended by the planning commission? Is that a fair statement?
Does the city have any say whatsoever in what gets built?
What kind of store?
Outside of the Smiths, what kind of retail goes in? Do we have any influence or say or whatsoever?
He said that he would get us what we would, I mean, we can make suggestions. I, I don't know that you always can necessarily say I want this or this, 'cause we could set ourselves.
There's four options, pick one.
I think you could do that, I think, I, I heard him to say they couldn't guarantee a particular one. They couldn't guarantee a Chick-fil-A, for example.
Yeah, but we could certainly make suggestions, 'cause I remember him saying the keys I wanted, I just wasn't able to.
I like the Chick-fil-A.
I do, I do too.
So I, yes, Brian, I think we could. And everything in the develop, we, we haven't really, 'cause we haven't even gotten to the point yet to say design standards, you know, if we would want it to look a certain way, 'cause we haven't even ever, because I, I think we should be able to.
So put that into the thing that you talked to him about, that the city wants to have at least input on the things that go in around in those other pa, pods or pads, whatever they're called.
Do we put in the commercial pads?
I think it's critical that we have the developers' agreement be able to negotiate like the setbacks and that. Oh, 'cause we don't have any commercial development standards, so we're gonna have to negotiate that in the developers' agreement.
Yeah, all of that, I think is pretty elementary, that, have to have. So we got a working.
I don't know, Debbie feels no.
Your what?
I, I've put feelers out, and I'm still getting names back of people who I, that don't want it, so.
Well, you'll always get that.
Yeah, I mean, I, I am, I just.
But you gotta use your good sense and your side.
And I, I, I am, but I. I represent a residential, and I told them I would represent them, and their voices would be heard. And I can't go against what I joined.
But you won't go after these guys for deciding something different?
No, they're, they're my friends, and every one of us has to make a decision based on what we have to do.
Yeah, where is Lisa on all of this?
I don't know.
That's what's frustrating, I wish she was here too. 'Cause she could be the swing vote, you know?
Well, okay, so I, I don't know if we've come to where you're at, but I don't see a motion tonight. But I think if, if you can go back to Stuart with those parameters, and if he's interested, then I think you need to be able to commit at some point to do it, otherwise you can't really move ahead.
Are you guys agreeance with that? With, uh, we, 'cause we don't wanna fill it in in a public meeting, so if we brought it forward for a conditional approval, is that how you guys wanna process it, or you wanna process it differently?
I think we need to reach out to every council person that's not here.
He was.
And ask him, ask her.
You need to educate her, somebody does.
How she's gonna vote, or what her, what her choices. 'Cause we can't, again, we can't do all this and then have one councilman person sway it in the negative, you know what I mean? And put all this for naught. That's a total waste of time, and people's time is valuable.
Well, at least Debbie, understanding your spot, the other three of you are okay with it if Stuart's willing to do the things that we talked about.
And still on the fence.
Maybe a little smaller store.
Smaller store, I've been done three days ago.
Well, put it, throw that in there, I mean.
Yeah, I don't.
I don't know that he has that option.
No.
I think Smiths, well, I don't know that he does, at least with Smiths.
Let's just see.
And I don't know that we should have that option, it's commercial, you put it in the future land use map for the commercial, so. I think if something comes, we either, either. So our next meeting won't be until July seventeenth, so that puts them off another month almost. Are we okay to give a conditional approval to move ahead with anything yet? Or are we still just?
I would say until you get a majority of three, then I would say no. You know, you need, we, somebody needs to reach out to Lisa and say, worry about with this, before we move forward with anything, otherwise it's a waste of time.
We don't have a guarantee she'll be here even at that night either, though.
Well, let's start by approaching Stuart of those things that you know are not gonna happen.
Yeah, we got some pretty good feedback.
And if he, if he says, if he says no, we're all done.
Just like we've said.
If he says okay, then I think.
Just like we've said.
Yeah.
If he says okay, then I think it's a matter of approaching Lisa, and, and maybe you do come together for a meeting like this sometime before the seventeen.
No, I mean, there's no, we won't misinterpret what you said, we'll, I mean, I can direct this motion, that's what it is. I just know, I think we unfortunately had to administratively a whole other roundabout, because we never really gotta do this, it's like a, it's like a comeback again, I guess, we came back again. But yeah, we'll tell them those items, those are pretty cut and dried. We'll see if he wants to continue the development.
Okay.
I'll try to talk to Lisa in the meantime, just see where, I don't even know, she's thinking. Does anybody have any idea? Has anybody talked to her?
I haven't.
No clue.
Well, I think you ought to invite her in and have several of you talk to her. Don't have so many you have a meeting.
Yeah.
Okay.
All right.
Well, if nothing else, then we will have a motion to adjourn.
I'll make a motion to adjourn in a second.
Okay, the motion was made by Councilmember.
Recording stopped.
Seconded by Councilmember Hill, I'm in favor. Okay, thank you, Dale, we got you out in time.